All right, let's get started. Folks, call the meeting to order. All right, we have a shared vision in the Fern Ridge School District, provide excellence for every student so that each will reach their greatest potential. We are always happy to have parents and other community members at our meetings. Thank you to the members of the public that have joined us as reminders, school board meetings and work sessions. Our meeting with the board helps providing an opportunity to observe the board's discussions and actions. In an effort to conduct official board business, we ask the audience to be respectful and refrain from questions, comments, and unnecessary noise while the board conducts the meeting. There's an opportunity for citizen comments tonight, and the board looks forward to hearing from those who signed up. I will share some reminders when we get to that portion of the meeting. Also, please note that all board meetings are live streamed and posted on the school board area of the district website. All right, we'll start out with our citizens' award by Mrs. Perry.
Um, so I am going to tell you. Okay, but um, I did get permission to share his story. He was recently diagnosed with type one diabetes and um, he has been a trooper during it. He has been brave and resilient, and he has been learning how to take care of himself while still navigating through the grade and school. And he was really looking forward to being here tonight. He's had kind of a hard day, so I had a feeling that he wouldn't make it. But he, he has been incredible through all of it. I'm just going to read you what his sister wrote. Logan is someone who is kind, thoughtful, caring, but most importantly, great. Throughout the year, I have seen Logan overcome amazing things and even pick up on long division like Logan said. When faced with adversity, he's a critical thinker and he has a willingness to overcome anything. Logan is an amazing classmate and a great friend. Every day, his classmates are in awe of his big smile. He has, regardless of the situation. I could not be more excited to see Logan receive this award. Congratulations, Logan. And our entire staff felt that way. He's just, it's really, he's always been an incredible student. He's always um, been a really important part of our community. But seeing him go through this challenge has made it, it's a more apparent how amazing it might be to you. So again, unfortunately, he's not here tonight, but I know that he's really excited.
All right, so there, would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance? For our school board, encourage public input. A person wanting to provide public comment will need to please submit an intent speak form to the board secretary by 1:00 P.M. on the day of the board meeting. Public comment is limited to the place on the agenda, not to exceed a total of thirty minutes for all commenters. Person giving public comment is limited to an established time limit of three minutes. While speakers may during public meeting offer objective criticism to school operations and programs, the board will not hear personal complaints concerning district personnel nor against any person connected with the school district. If you say your name and address or speak before an organization, state the name of the organization. The board reserves the right to refer the matter to administration. We have one tonight, Jessica Colwell. And I'll show you have the time.
Good evening. The last meeting, Gary proposed under discussion ten A to discuss fifth grade growth and human development. That was all the business. There was nothing listed in regards to it being Planned Parenthood or what was going to be proposed that night. During that discussion, he asked you to pass using Planned Parenthood again. Last year, I think you're all aware, there was some serious issues with the presentation. First off, what they presented, but secondly, with a specific presenter and things she said to fifth grade students. She told kids that a piercing that appeared on the presentation was for personal pleasure. I think that's incredibly important and appropriate to share with a fifth grade class. At the last meeting, it was also told to you that they didn't know of anywhere else that provided this option and the teachers chose it. Um, I feel like it's really unfair to say teachers chose it. They were given one choice. That's like saying you can have mac and cheese for lunch and that's it. You're going to get mac and cheese or you're not going to eat. So it wasn't really a choice given to the teachers. They were told they could teach it or they could use Planned Parenthood. It took me five minutes to find out that we already used that medical at our school. They're used at the high school. Oh, Hi Burger is the contact. They're also used at the middle school. It used to be Whitney Davis. It's now the seventh grade science teacher who I've been told won't return until calls to them medical. I spoke with Michelle Coates in depth, and as of right now, they have a high school program and a middle school program. And she was more than happy to accommodate a fifth grade program following all ODE guidelines. We also paid from what I've heard, a couple hundred dollars to up to two thousand dollars for Planned Parenthood. I don't know the exact figures. When I spoke with Michelle Coates, it would be free of charge because they're a five oh one three C and everything they do is donor. I'm not saying go with dental medical, but three people chose to approve that. And I'd like to ask, did you even look at the curriculum? You would choose, you approved curriculum that was going to be put forth? Do you know what that curriculum is? Do you know what Planned Parenthood is showing this year? Did you ask to see it? Was it given to you? And I'm asking that as I actually want a response. I want to know that when you approved that, did you look at what that curriculum is?
I'm not choosing your response.
Why didn't she respond to it?
So I don't have to.
But you would approve the curriculum for our students. There was, there was three yeses, and you approved it. Did you even look at it before you approved it?
The curriculum. I trust the staff that is hired by the superintendent.
So you trust him, but he was asking.
I trust the staff, I trust the staff that is hired by the superintendent who looked at it very good.
He couldn't hire them without your approval. That's why he brought it forth. The reason he had to bring it forth to you is because pals and Benita refused to pay for it again because of what happened last year. For years, it has been paid for, I believe, and I can't quote this, but Elmyra PTA. Again, I'm not for sure on that, but I know pals paid for their side. The reason pals was no longer paying for it is because of the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for the respect that I get here. I appreciate it.
Time's up. All right, moving on to, we don't have here yet, so we're going to
I said my three minutes. I mean, that's like, it's, it's made clear that they're, I, I would love a response of what's it looked at. And I, again, I'm not saying used to medical, but I was able to see those.
But she actually asked. The school board.
Go ahead, if you want to respond, that's fine, your time's up.
But you don't want some stuff?
Correct.
Okay.
I told you why I approved it already. Because I trust the staff that the superintendent hired to review the curriculum. So that's why I approved it.
Andrea, would you like to do something?
I, at this point, no. I
Barb, did you hear that?
Can you repeat the question for me?
So Jessica is asking the board, for the board members that approve the Planned Parenthood for the fifth grade growth and development, that did, did you see the curriculum? Go ahead.
Were you seeing the curriculum before it was approved? I think you're improving curriculum, you should have a chance to see it and actually approve it.
Did you hear that?
I did not see the curriculum again, as we are not administrators of the school, the, the teachers and associates. That's something that your superintendent is in charge of. They monitor, they research, they review that curriculum, and they have said, yes, they're comfortable with that. So based on their guidance, we can go forward. Again, we have multiple curriculums that will come to us. We don't go through each and every one and look at each and every one. So why would this one be different from the process we have used to approve all the other curriculums?
Did you ask why it was stopped to you? Because it had been used, why?
Your, your time is up. To answer the question. Um, any other, anyone else that can respond? I mean, both would know.
Well, I, I mean, I can respond. But um, so the reason why I said no is, well, first of all, I've already explained that I thought it was under discussion item and that there wouldn't be any voting. Um, so I would have wanted to know a lot more information where I actually could have voted. But from what I've heard about Planned Parenthood, what I've heard when, when you go the good and the bad, I've heard a lot more not so good than I have good. Um, and I just thought that it was time to reevaluate, see what is out there, see what is available to us, and then just go.
All right. Moving on, we have our number five. We actually have Lenea Steve, folks that just arrived. Thank you for being here, Rosen and Tony and my gosh. Linda Hamilton, I knew you, Hannah will say, oh my gosh, I got a real Linda. All right, so you're up.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, get here and then you can get out of here.
Sorry for running late.
That's okay, we understand.
We're Lowell and in Junction City.
Thank you.
Oh, thanks for having us, appreciate it. So I'm Tony Scurdo, superintendent of Lane Education Service District. And I'm here to just say a few words about our local service plan. As the education service districts in Oregon were required to put together a local service plan for all of our component school districts. And in Lang County, we have sixteen, sixteen school districts. And Fern Ridge sits probably somewhere right about in the middle in terms of size. Junction of Four J being the largest, I think Papleton being the smallest. And so Fern Ridge is right, right there, kind of a middle sized district, which lends itself pretty well for the services we offer. Um, most of the services we offer to our districts come in our special education department. Uh, and with uh, well, I'm going to have Fern Ridge's order in front of me, I picked up Junction Cities. But, but there are special education services we provide. Um, we also provide school improvement services, basically as a curriculum department. We have a curriculum specialists that a lot of our middle sized and small districts take advantage of using. And we also have technology services and administrative services. And the part about the component school districts and what they need to do is take a vote on our local service plan every year. Uh, the local service plan you're taking a vote on, uh, this, either this meeting or a future meeting is the local service plan for the twenty four, twenty five school. And we put these together in two-year increments, and we're actually in the second year. Uh, twenty four, twenty five is actually the second year of the plan. Typically, the plan doesn't change a whole lot between the first and second year. So the plan that you know this year is pretty similar to the plan that I'm asking you to approve for the next year. The um, let's see, the superintendent's council approved this back in our November meeting. And our school board, Linda Hamilton and Rose Woldy on the school board, approved it at their December meeting. And we asked our opponent school districts to take action on this by, by March first. So it's not great, that's going to be February, that's fine too. And so again, not many changes from this year and last year. One of the things, though, that I'm really proud of what we've been doing comes in the area of our integrated guidance approach. Uh, districts are faced with the Oregon Department of Education giving lots of streams of money. And it's great, all those streams of money come with separate reporting, which is also cumbersome sometimes for your superintendent or administrative staff. So what the ESDs have done through the Oregon Department of Education Resources is stand up a, a small team of folks who can really provide that help in terms of getting those plans off ground and the reporting on those plans. We're just in the first year of that, we're really getting to that. So we'll see more of that, but I was kind of proud of how that launched this last year with the good things. Uh, other than that, I, here to answer any questions if you have any. If you have night grade, if you have questions later, that's fine too. Don't have to wait till we come around for a local service plan conversation to ask questions. Let's know what your concerns might be, but I hope there are any questions that we have tonight.
I, I do want to find out is, are there any tweaks that you need to do?
Between, between this current year and next year, there really aren't any tweaks. Uh, there might be a custom service or two added. We've been trying to stand up nursing services as it's difficult for us to do that for smaller districts. I think you've been set with the nurse here for a while. Uh, the other service that, I guess the other thing that is, it's not new next year, it's actually, it was here last year. There was a retirement, there's, there's a librarian. So you, you have librarian services through us, not your, not a sole librarian. We have one librarian for, I think she works in about six or seven districts now, Fern Ridge being one. So it's not really a tweak, it's just something that we had a gap because of retirement, and then we found somebody. I think uh, two months ago, month and a half ago, December, December. Okay, so, so that's just a example of one of the things we could do in terms of being flexible to respond to what districts want. So that came in the middle of the plan, but we have a mechanism in the local service plan for custom ships. Having to be a custom ship.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, you appreciate the partnership. Mark, it's good to see you again.
Great to see you.
Thank you for the, the long tenure as a liaison for the middle sized districts.
Yeah.
Yeah. Superintendent Carpenter's been longstanding contributor to our attending state meetings. One of, one of the longtime leaders. How many years?
Thank you, Tony.
Thanks, Rose and Linda, thank you for coming out, thanks. See you. All right, so along with that, we have, we have a resolution twenty three dash twenty four slash zero, excuse me. That we would need board action on.
I would just ask on a table because I haven't had internet in these days, so I haven't had a chance to read. Is my only until March, isn't it?
Tony, it's not an issue, this is on our February agenda.
No, not at all. And I guess, because typically, I mean, you guys often try to do a first reading, second. First time you get a chance to hear about it. That's fine, I, we're, we're
I would lean towards voting, but I would really like to break it up before I make a decision.
Fine with me.
Okay.
Thanks. All right, moving on, two thousand twenty four bond update, Scott.
Hey, so good evening. Uh, this is not a new, where would you like me to stand? Sorry, so I'm not
Stand for everybody.
Right here in the middle, right by the
Everybody, so here. Maybe that, then I don't have my back. This one comes with candy. Okay, so, uh, so again, my name is Scott Rose and with RNC Management Group. Uh, I've worked off and on with Ferner School District for a number of years. Uh, your district has gone through an assessment, physical assessment of all the buildings, gone through committee planning process. And that went through uh, mid, midpoint through twenty twenty three. And then there were surveys done in the fall, two separate surveys, asking questions about what would, if we went out for a bond, what would we like to see on that bond? Identify the existing needs at each of the facilities and then circle back with more detailed survey information in October, November. So uh, that information was presented to the board as well as this list here. This list was modified to uh, well, primarily aligned with the committee's recommendations. It was also modified based on the survey results as well, minor modifications and tweaks. Uh, and it was prioritized based on those survey results as well. Uh, the, the scope did not materially change. It was still a focus on educational facilities, on mechanical systems, on athletic facilities, and then some of the other sort of deteriorating systems, parking lots comes to mind. So uh, the district applied for what we call an awesome grant that is, that is acronym, O S C I M, awesome, the other awesome. Uh, and it is a state grant where the district could receive as much as six million dollars. Uh, the district, but it's a highly competitive grant. So the district applied and the district did not get the grant, but they are very high up on the waiting list. And the way that these state grants work is that uh, everybody on the list is sort of first eligible, must pass a bond to get that grant. So the district that doesn't pass a bond, well, then they go to the first person on the waiting list. So that kind of, so the idea is that you apply and you're somewhere in the list. Now, we'll lower down the list, obviously, you worry more about your odds, but uh, but right now, I like where Fern Ridge is sitting. Uh, you're uh, second or third on the waiting list, depending on how you look at it, because one district split, both some permitted and then some on the waiting list. Uh, typically, I'm not trying to get anybody's hopes up, but typically, what we see in a May election, if the district chooses to go out in May, is we see about a fifty six to fifty eight percent uh, passage rate. And meaning that not a little bit less than half, as half the, the uh, districts putting bonds out there don't pass. Uh, and that would move you up into a commitment, should you pass. So a lot, a lot of the conditions and caveats with that. So I feel good where you're staying with the awesome grant. Um, but again, it's, you're on the waiting list, it's not a commitment yet. So because it was on a commitment, we were, uh, we've reconvened with the committee to identify what would be on a bond to ask and what would be in the awesome grant. So build upon the awesome grant. So right now, what we're looking at is a fifteen point six million dollar bond and then a six million dollar awesome grant. And so combined, that is twenty one point three. And you asked me, well, why twenty one point three instead of twenty one point six? Because three hundred thousand dollars of that is what they call capitalized interest. So we don't get to apply that to projects, that makes sense. So what has been proposed by the committee and reviewed and approved by the committee in our last meeting a couple of weeks ago? I think before weather uh, is what you see up here on the board. My apologies if it's a little small to read, but we identify these in basically in groups, identifying safety concerns. Uh, minor, I mean, the district's actually done a lot with safety. I do security and safety audits in multiple districts and multiple states. And since I did the one here, I want to say in fifteen, sixteen, the district has invested a lot in safety. That's really good, I mean, a lot in terms of access controls, minus site, uh, surveillance, that kind of thing. And we've really done a lot to really make your facilities safer. So you've got a couple of areas to go. Uh, we got some doors that aren't closing properly. We've got some, uh, some fence perimeter, not applied at Elmyra Elementary School. And then mechanical systems, Fern Ridge, now Elmyra High School. Uh, those are really the focus. There's a minor component in Elmyra Elementary, but the big focus is Fern Ridge Middle School and Elmyra High School. We've got heating and ventilation systems that are simply just aged out. This isn't a matter of maintenance, it's just an issue of age, uh, and, and that happens. And so the idea is to replace your existing control systems with what we call a direct digital control. What that does is, and it pays it back very quickly. The estimate on payback on a direct digital control system is typically three or four years because what you're able to do is better diagnose the maintenance and the problems and mechanical, because it's telling you this damper is stuck rather than you spending a day going and finding out why am I getting heat dumped in or no heat to a space, that kind of thing. Uh, it's also to address uh, the peripheral components as well within the rooms, to make sure that everything's working well. You know, you've got boilers and make sure the steam traps are not blown and replacing the steam traps. But going through and doing what we call retro commissioning of the entire system, replacement of controls. And then you've got about six roof pop units that do need to be replaced. And they're at an age of thirty five to forty years old. It just, you know, that's what happens. Uh, it's also providing air conditioning. We say in targeted areas, when targeted areas typically will mean instructional areas and starting with the south facing ones and going kind of as far as we can. But the idea is really focusing on those that are having the, the greatest heat gain. And you know, again, trying to apply that as off as, as throughout both those schools as much as possible. Uh, that's not to exclude other areas, and we'll go down athletics and education, we'll get to those components. So athletics, uh, that is uh, still very important to your community. Uh, the survey results were overwhelming in terms of wanting to invest in athletics, but not just at the high school, but throughout your district. Looking at uh, opportunities for K twelve at, at, you know, whatever locations those might be. You really want to take a look where your land is. Right now, that's not been designed because right now, you're in a planning phase, you have planning budgets, if you will. Uh, so track replacement is at, at the high school, going upgrading from your four forty to your four hundred meter, actually, you know, making it so you can actually have invitationals and that kind of thing. Um, pardon?
Oh, sorry, I just said actually have track.
Yes, actually have track, it's exactly, yes. No, no, that's, that's completely okay. Uh, uh, storm drainage, synthetic turf field in the middle. It says football, but you can play soccer in that as well, but the idea is a synthetic turf field in the middle of that track. Um, a new grandstand, as you know, your wood one rotted and uh, you're not alone in that. This isn't a, this isn't a maintenance thing. I, I, I have personally seen five grandstands, wooden grandstands, all the similar vintage and all this rotting. That's just what they do. Would grandstands, you know, sixty, seventy years outside, that's what happens. So I would recommend that you replace it with aluminum, still looking at roof, press box, all those components. Um, also loose equipment, replacing some of the broken track stuff, that, that kind of thing. We're really reinvesting in that complex, if you will. Also taking a look at your restroom and concession buildings, keep costs down. I'm recommending prefab structures that dropped in place rather than framed on site. That's going to extend your dollars and stretch your dollars out to, to do more. And then I say expanded field development for grades, uh, K through twelve, ex community, multiple sites. That would be an ongoing design discussion. So if the bond passes, uh, shortly after the bond passes, then the district would convene a committee typically. You know, some community members, some staff members would talk about, okay, where's our greatest need? What kind of fields are our greatest need? And making sure that we can accommodate those. And we're just, again, stretching the dollars as far as we can. Education is, was a, a big component of the survey as well. Uh, we need an elementary school, upgrading the gymnasium. So I said, uh, you know, Fern Ridge Middle School and Elmyra High School getting a lot of mechanical. We also really needed the Benita Gymnasium, uh, desperately so. So we, I kind of combined all that together and just said, we just need to upgrade that space. It's an instructional area and it needs to get upgraded. Um, that floor is, I've not seen a floor that, that, that old that isn't wood. Or I don't know what that's, that's a um, so it, you know, I mean, that's, that's kind of borderline safety. I could have put that in safety, I suppose, but um, acoustics, wall finish, safety, but just basically, Benita needs a, a gymnasium that is, uh, you know, that is meeting current needs for the students. Fern Ridge Middle School, you see a lot of the rest of the education there on focused on Fern Ridge Middle School. For those that were here for your last bond issue, um, there's a lot of emphasis on the high school. You've obviously got a replacement on my right elementary school. Uh, and there's even work at Benita in terms of an addition, cafeteria addition for classrooms. Fern Ridge Middle School got, you know, a little bit of a new front door, but didn't really go deep into Fern Ridge Middle School. So Fern Ridge Middle School is really the time to invest in that school. So it's really taking a look at those education spaces. You can see there, we're identifying, uh, identified science, uh, the home, old home economics, band choir, SLC rooms, but um, creating more maker spaces, so really looking at how we bridge instructional program at the middle school to instructional program at the high school. What does that look like? Let's create those introductory spaces so that feeds well to the high school. Also identify, um, the standalone covered shelter. Uh, I think it's about the same vintage as your grandstand. Um, it's, it's in, it's in bad shape. So rather than just tearing down, replacing it, is there something that we can do that, that activates that area next to the cafeteria and the gym more so that we are able to have students go outside, but still in a secured environment? What does that look like? And I would imagine that a design activity that involves most about, you know, what do we want this space to be outside? But, but students need that outdoor space. How do we, you know, replace the rotting shelter with something that the students will actually use and benefit from? So a lot of different components there. We did have more education components, but again, as we're looking at that fifteen, fifteen three versus six million dollars, is where do we make that break? And the Fern Ridge Middle School classroom investments was rising to the top of the survey. Uh, last component here in the bond, I scrolled down a little bit, are restroom investments. Um, I know that's not sexy work, but you know, you need some, so you, you need some improvements at your restroom. So um, uh, Benita and Elmyra High School most, Ferner's most little too. But again, it's kind of how, how long can we stretch those dollars? And this isn't the gutting and remodeling, this is taking care of finishes, fixtures, lights, um, getting exhaust in there. Should we actually exhaust out what we have in there? So that can do grabbing. So uh, that was, is what is proposed for the bond, to be on the bond, the scope. And as I mentioned, fifteen three, yes, a fifteen, six million dollar bond, the delta being the capitalized interest, and that's down to the bottom of the next page. But um, on this next page, so these items would be accomplished if you would receive the awesome grant. So you go out for a bond, you pass a bond, if enough others don't pass, and I don't want you to, you know, wish ill well of other districts. But if others don't pass, then you get that grant, okay? And so what would we do with a six million dollar grant? And if you only get part of it, maybe only part of the funds are available because they have a very limited pot. Um, then you would probably reconvene and prioritize. Okay, of these things, what is the most important? Say if your grant was not six million, it was three million or something, what would you do? So this, the awesome So this, the awesome grant one is not in any particular order, but uh, the rest of the educational needs that were identified. A little bit more uh, at Fern Ridge Middle School, really just kind of now addressing more the general education spaces throughout, not just a specialized instruction, but everywhere. Uh, also the high school, science labs there are dated, not as bad as the middle school. Uh, weight room upgrades, that's actually part of a donor program, so the idea would be invest a little bit more there, uh, they're actually looking at options there where they can. Get some investment, but they'll need it to be matched. Um, kindergarten player uh, area here, actually, and I'm sorry, that's actually misstated, it's not kindergarten, what is it, it's a.
Um, it's our bridges classroom.
Bridges classroom, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Um, and then walking track, uh, because Benita's got a walking track, we've got, you know, that physical activity space, we didn't put that in at El Myra Elementary School, so looking at that, so. Again, thinking about the educational benefits. The elementary school replaces all lighting with LED, that's a large number, we're looking at options of. Uh, uh, getting matching dollars with E web and and looking at what those options are, you folks unfortunately follow the Energy Trust of Oregon for electrical. So you utilize E web, um, so your your matching tends to be smaller, uh, but we want to make sure that we can actually accomplish that throughout the project. Or throughout the school, if you will, uh, parking, you've got a lot of parking needs, just, um. And I know three million dollars seems like a big number, and it is a big number, um, but when you have a sea of parking, I mean, at your various sites, you have to invest. That's certainly not at El Myra Elementary School, it's a brand new facility, you don't need any investment there, but. I'm not gonna go into detail, you you you've seen your parking lots, you know what they're like, so, I mean, some of them are just, you know, deteriorated and and others. Um, don't flow well and and need some additional parking, so you can see there's some reference to expansion there, changes the traffic flow, but really, it's. It's investing in those parking lots, and right now, your backlot at the high school is salvageable, you know, you can. Um, you can seal those cracks, you can put on a slurry coat, and you can extend the life of that one, but you've got some others that. Are already what we call alligatoring or heating, which just means that the subgrade's impacted, and you really need to take it down to gravel and rebuild it back up. And again, these are things that are called, we call capital, this is not maintenance, this is not, you know, maintenance is replacing the filter on mechanically, capital is replacing the mechanical. You know, and both have, you know, di- different needs and different times, but this is definitely capital. Same thing with parking lots, you can go, you know, seal some cracks, but this is really replacing it down to the gravel and bringing it back up, so capital needs there. Um, site work, couple items there, uh. Anybody that's done playground duty at Benita Elementary School knows we've got a lot of uh, uh, flooding uh, between sort of. Where the kids get out of the school and to the playground. I don't know if you've lost children between the two, I don't know, but there's a big, big pond there, so, um, really need to take a look at storm drainage, storm drainage is one of those things that. Typically does um, have a short life be uh, at around playgrounds. It's because you have the woodchips and the other things that are safety for kids to, you know, not print themselves like all playground equipment, uh, or jump off or whatever. Um, but it needs that constant sort of storm investment, and because that's an area that's soft and utilized by literally hundreds of people. Um, uh, it it just does need, you know, periodic reinvestment. And then uh, there's some drainage issues on the backside here in the school that need to be addressed as well, and I think we can also sort of combine with the walking trail, and if you do fields, I think. All those can be combined to be very cost efficient, so. Uh, anyway, these are estimated budgets, uh, these are uh. Based on pricing that we've seen in other districts across the state, we have added a six percent annual inflation. Uh, during the height of COVID, it got up to about eight and a half, right now, people are thinking it's settling down to about five and a half. I think it's still volatile, I'm recommending six percent, um, at this point, uh, uh, the budgets are also all in. So that's really important that you have an all-in budget, it's not just a construction, but. If somebody tells you they're gonna go build X for a million dollars, and you go out and get a million dollars, you're probably gonna be about four hundred grand line. Because you still have to design it, you have to do surveying and geotech, get your permits, uh, you have to have contingency for when you go to dig and. You know, something softer than you just made, so you've got structural bill and the like, so you want to make sure that you actually have those components. Uh, furnishings, we're at, uh, what's not included, or what's included in those budgets, it's also furnishings for those classrooms that get renovated. You don't want to renovate the classrooms and then have, you know, furniture from sixty years old that's broken and the like, the idea is really think about. The whole student and how the student is impacted, not just by the space around them, but by the furniture that they utilize and the equipment that people watch. And then uh, uh, project budget total, as I mentioned, uh, reflects fifteen point six million dollar bond, the strategy right now is over two sales to keep the tax rate low. That's one of the strategies we utilizing, right now, the proposed tax rate, uh, our estimated tax rate is two dollars and twenty cents per thousand. Which is what you passed in twenty fourteen, I believe, and so the idea is, and it is, and it has gone down over time, because that's what happens when you grow and you have. Uh, uh, increases in uh, uh, assessed value and the like, and you can start to see that go down, so this is. Reestablishing that rate back to where you were in twenty fourteen, and actually even before that, you've had a couple of spots where it's been at two twenty, so the idea is to get it back there. And to do that bond of one sale would not maintain that tax rate at two twenty. Um, so the idea is do two sales, do one, then about two, three months of uh, the election, if you choose to go out in May of uh, this year. And then the other one probably early in twenty-five, so as, because as we're looking at what the projections are for interest rates. You gotta take a look at what your cash flow is and how big each of the sales are, to make sure that you have enough cash to. You know, uh, do the design, bid out the construction, that kind of stuff, so. Um, yes, and uh, uh, while we're uh, looking at and breaking out that awesome grant. Uh, from the state, energy utility grants are not yet in these calculations above, because those have been very volatile. Uh, my recent experience with uh, energy grants is a grant that used to be about uh, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, we got six thousand dollars, and so. Uh, fortunately, we did not count on that grant in in a bond package, I was up in Portland, uh, but that, that happens, they're very volatile, and I'd rather you. Look at, well, what, you know, if we get that grant, depending on what it is, what more can we do, what more can we buy, or what can we save for rainy day? Um, uh, you do have the flexi- uh, flexibility and latitude that, uh, you have to meet all of your bond promises. And you have to spend eight, at least eighty-five percent of your bond in the first three years, that last fifteen percent. Um, you have a a a longer timeframe from which to spend it. Uh, and I know several districts, and then with about two or three percent left over at the end, and they just kind of put that in a fund, so when a boiler goes out or something like that happens. They have a fund to draw that from, you still have the strings attached, you can't find teachers and curriculum with it, but you can invest in buildings, and so. Uh, the idea is meet all your bond promises, get all those done, and then if you have dollars left over, you have various processes available to you, they're saving it for a rainy day fund. Or reconvening the committee and saying what other things, you know, might we do with this money, but you have a variety of options, um, that would be presented to the board at that time. Uh, should you pass it on to them. So with that, uh, I I don't know if this was just a read tonight, or if this was a take action, or, I don't think.
I think I just wanted to hear from the board that you want us to continue down this path, because if so. Got a lot of work to do in the next four weeks, and then at the February board meeting, that's where you take action, so. You had specific questions for me or Scott, or things to look into? Um, next steps that you're saying, yep, continue down this path, I'll be reaching out to that Carol McCoo and. Uh, those folks to start working on bond title language. Very strict regulations and guidelines on how that is formatted, and then as we approach the February board meeting, I get you that information in. In February, uh, you would decide we're going out, then I have till the end of that week to file the paperwork on March first at Lane County Elections Office.
And the Carol McCoo, as was mentioned, she's uh, with a legal bond legal counsel firm, and so she gets right down to the words of question, the words of explanatory statements. Words of the uh, uh, there's like three different components that they file, and they have an eight oh four and an eight oh six form that they file, so. Um, all that needs to be done, and that's why you utilize legal counsel for that, so they make sure that you're compliant with all the county requirements, and. Uh, they're separate from your uh, your bond financing council, which is different. But any questions?
You mentioned that we're second. How many?
Good question, I did not bring that spreadsheet, um, the ones that were based on priority need. There were five, and the ones based on what they call first in time are basically a lottery, there were eight, I believe.
So out of thirteen potentials or seven?
Yeah, well, and they have these two different lists, and you're second and third on both lists, so. That can, that can play well for you, and that if you've got eight, and you have like just, you know, two that that don't pass on the longer list. Yeah, yeah, your odds are great, uh, uh, to move up on that one, the one that's priority uh, formula. Is based off of uh, a a long formula that is about my pay grade, it has something to do with. Uh, ADM, the poverty statistics and the like, and they and they identify what your ranking is within the state, there's a hundred and ninety-seven school districts in the state. And I want to say that Fern Ridge is one. So you're kind of middle of the pack sadly, so, um, yes, so I I like your odds better on just the first in time, where they basically took. Everybody that applied, you know, through the hat, started picking out names, and then just put them in the list.
Second question, this could be put, put in the cart and pull the horse, but. Is there a way, say the bond passes and we will do all this stuff, is there a way to give local companies priority? Like if there's a like Provers Dirt Works, like can they get first priority to get this bid so that we can keep all the potential work local?
That's what we did the last bond.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, that's, that's a great question, we get that in in every district, because how can we keep more work local, and so. The idea is to create strategies to help uh, locals. Have the best opportunity to get the work, because you're a public sector, you have to work the lowest bid. But typically what I've done, and I think about the uh, Dallas School District here, Salem, you know, as an example, is, is right after the bond. Is we put out a mailer to every single painter, art player, electrician, plumber, et cetera, in the area. And typically, we think of local as probably county, you know, and and we can tighten that bubble wherever you want it. We say, hey, we're gonna talk about the bond projects, we're gonna talk about how we could help you. You know, help you leverage your skill sets to get more work. And so they come in and and I think oftentimes, you know, like standing there alone, I mean, these guys come in, I want to hear about how I can work. We talk about what the projects are very specifically, we talk about the budgets, we talk about the schedules, and so we identify these are the projects that we talk more about. Um, uh, for insurance criteria, because the district has to protect themselves, so there's insurance criteria, and we ask, okay, does this. Preclude anybody, and a couple of people say, hey, yeah, this precludes me because I I can't get that level of insurance. And so we talk about, you know, what are other options, we don't want to put the district at risk, but we want to take a look at, maybe it's project sizes, example. Bonding limitations become a big thing, in Dallas School District, we have uh, multiple re-roofing projects. I said, okay, if I bid all the roofing projects together, it's about two million dollars worth of work, there were about six rippers there, I said. I said, so if I did this all together, it's two million dollars worth of work, which of you six can't bid on the job? For the six raised their hands, I said, okay, so you're telling me that if I bid it out to smaller projects, where no project is bigger than about, oh, six hundred, seven hundred thousand. Can you bid on that then, then, they go, yes, I go, great, you just told us now that we're gonna bid these out of separate projects, not one big project, because then they're able to bond. So that's an example of how we try and leverage it so locals get an opportunity, uh, but again, it does come down to a little bit. Um, and uh, but that, that is an example, we also go over prevailing wage, because you do have to pay prevailing wage. You say that word, that phrase, prevailing wage, it scares a lot of folks that have never, you know, filed prevailing wage before. So we have the prevailing wage forms that we go over with them, how they turn in the affidavits, and that's a prevailing wage, and what that looks like, so we're trying to educate them so it's not. A scary thing, because oftentimes in smaller communities, your locals tend to work more on residential than commercial or public. And as such, they just, they've never gone down that path, but it's, it's still. Electrical, it's still mechanical, it's still carpentry, it's still the same thing, it's just like, how can we make this less daunting for the locals? So those are all sorts of strategies and workshops that we do to help encourage locals to participate and compete well. Um, you know, so again, insurance, bonding, project size, um, we also don't want to like specify a product that nobody locally can put in. Okay, sometimes like a roof, you know, I go back to roofing. Certified installers are certified for roofs, well, if we specify a type of roof, but only three people at the stake can install, that would be stupid. So, you know, let's look at ways where we can specify a roof that locals are certified to install, as an example. So you still want a good quality roof, you don't want some compromising quality, but, and say, okay, let's go with this one, and so that one. So I know that's a very long explanation, but I mean, those are, those are just examples, because I can't just say, let's give it to that person because they have a El Myra grant. So, but yeah, so that's how, that's how we get them for.
You got a question from the board? Thanks, Scott.
I know it's animated, you know me, I can't talk with my hands up.
All right, moving on to monthly items, approval of minutes from last meeting. I'll second. The motion is second to approve the minutes uh, from last month, any discussion? Yeah, all those favors, say aye, aye? Both, motion carries five to zero.
So, just going back, do we. Do you want our input about the going forward, or are do you, do you feel like you've gotten what you?
I've got what I, I mean, if anybody had concerns about going forward, this is what I want to hear now.
Are you talking about the bond plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, it's fine, yeah, it's good. Uh, moving on, business office, enrollment report, Spona, I think online.
I am here. Wait for it to have it pulled up. All right, this is our enrollment as of January first, um, overall, our in district enrollment is one thousand three hundred and five. Which is forty-one below our budgeted numbers, and twenty-two below from the same time last year. At the elementary level, we are down forty-one from six fifty-nine to six eighteen. At the middle school level, we are down by four from two ninety-one to two eighty-seven. And then at the high school level, we are up by four from three ninety-six to four hundred, so that's where the forty-one's coming from. Uh, we are up eight for the added district placements. From the original budgeted sixteen. And that's all I have on the enrollment report, unless the board has any questions on any of that.
Good question, and it might not be for you, Spona, it might be for Mr. Fern, but we, so we've talked as a board about exit interviews for staff. Is there any way we could incorporate exit interviews for students? Because they have to verbally say they're not enrolled, right, or written, is there a way to easily be like. Could you provide any feedback as to why you are transferring from our district, just to gather some information as to why. Our enrollment is down and why students are leaving?
Yeah, I I am not sure on that, that would definitely be a Gary question.
Yeah, I don't know, I would, I've never, I'd want to see if there's some other model, I think there's some other district that does that, I haven't heard of that. And most of, most of the folks that, um. Um, I shouldn't say, I I don't know, the vast majority, they don't have to notify us, we simply just get a record to request, right, so typically, they're on. The ones that I know about, like, if someone wants to transfer to. Um, Junction City or Churchill, we just approve them all, so assign them, and uh, so we have records of that. Why they're going there, very, just as similar as all the ones I sign that are coming here from Churchill or Pro or Junction City.
But we have their contact information, right, so is there like a quick reply, Google sheet of like, we got your records request, thank you, we're sending it now, could I just ask you? Possibly if you're willing, why you're transferring?
Yeah, any anything's possible, I want to look at the model, and the Google sheet model, we've tried it in the past, and people often have a Google account, so that doesn't work very well. I'm sure there's someone.
Thank you.
All uh. Sometime before the next school board meeting, I'll see if any other district does that.
Thank you.
So maybe this is for board then, so then I would say, um. No, but let's go ahead and see if there's any other models, if there's not any other models, it's maybe one chance.
Thank you, Spona.
Yeah.
All right, want to move on to the general fund revenue and expenditure report?
Yes, I'm ready. Okay, this is the general fund revenue and expense report as of December thirty-first. We received another large property tax payment, putting us at already receiving ninety-five percent of our budgeted property taxes. Overall, we've received seventy-four percent of our budgeted revenue, which is similar to last year, we were at seventy-one percent. We have spent thirty-five percent of our operating expenditures, uh, whereas last year we had spent thirty-six percent, so very similar. Um, you'll see at the bottom of the financial report, there is a large number down there, two million sixty thousand. Um, that's for the annual transfers, uh, that was processed in December, and these are transfers from the general fund. To support the other funds, such as the food service fund, athletic fund, textbook fund, district maintenance reserve, tech reserve. And we have an HVAC and sewer reserve, um, so I just wanted to note that that's what that number there is for. Um, also, I had hoped to present. Um, also, I had hoped to present the supplemental budget at this meeting, but I am still waiting for the official final audit report. For twenty two, twenty three. Um, and this, that report really ensures the accuracy of my beginning balances, which corresponds to the ending balances from twenty two, twenty three. So I'm gonna, I have to wait for that. Um, I did speak with them, they're working on it, they hope to have it with me, to me within a week or two, but I don't know, they've said that before too, so. Crossing my fingers. Um, does the board have any questions on the financial report?
All right, we do require more action for the general fund revenue and expenditures.
I'll second.
The motion is second to approve the general fund revenue expenditures, uh, December thirty first. Any discussion? And none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, Spona.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, Spona. All right, moving on to reports. Burner education association.
Uh, just because we want to get to work recognition month. Um, so a couple upcoming events, I just want you guys to be aware of. Uh, so basketball is at Harrisburg tomorrow, and then our home against Sayu's law on Thursday, and sisters next Tuesday at home. Wrestling is senior nights tomorrow, um, versus Springfield, I believe, and I think it starts at five thirty. And I know all the sports teams are working on some makeup dates as well. And the winter music concert is next Monday, the twenty ninth of the theater. And I didn't get a chance to connect with our teacher before he had left for the day. But I believe it's at around six-ish, but I'm going to try and have him get a posting out so people know when it starts. And then a couple of people I would just like to recognize, first off, Paul, for keeping all the servers going, problem solved. Last week I was working at the district office because I had no internet for about three, four days, and I needed internet to grade the Spanish project. So I hung out there for like three or four hours, couple days. And but Paul was just all over the place, problem solving, helping with the storm cleanup, not even computer related stuff, recognizing leaks. And I was just really impressed with how just jumping in and helping out um, with all of our tech issues in the storm. So thank you, Paul. And then I also want to thank Spona, um, our business manager. Not only does she do the budget enrollment, I've just, as teachers, we're all impressed with how she has handled all the FMLA, the paid leave organs, sick leave, work and comp. Just doing what's best for staff. Insurance, we moved uh, companies with kind of our benefits card. And she just is super organized and things just seem to run as well as sleep. So I just would like to thank those two people um, for all your contributions to the district. And the next thing, uh, Fernridge School District, uh, and our Fernridge Education Association, we would like to recognize the school board for January. Um, as it is recognition month. And at our last executive meeting, uh, we kind of organized it where each building was in charge of a specific member. And we just wanted to share a little bit of the writing that we came up with. So um, I'm going to share a couple from the elementary schools, and then I know we have a few other folks who would like to share some things. So, Venita or Andrea. Uh, on behalf of the neat elementary school, we want to thank you for your dedication to the Fernridge School District and the community. Your countless hours of hard work show that the students and staff are your top priority. Your continued commitment does not go unnoticed, thank you. And then the next one I have to read, um, is from Amira Elementary for Kathleen. On behalf of the Fernridge Education Associate, Association, we would like to thank Kathleen Pizzola for her committed service toward district by being an advocate for our community. Schools, and most importantly, our students. We appreciate her dedication and collaboration with other school district staff as she helps build the future of education in the Fernridge School District. Being a part of the school board can be a difficult job, and we thank you for your time and sharing our goal of providing children with the education that they need to be safe, healthy, and successful. And a quote, "Education is for improving lives of others and for leaving your community and world better than you found it." Marion Wright Edelman. Thank you for all that you do, and happy school board appreciation week.
Hi, my name is Michelle Nelson, and I'm an English teacher at the high school. On behalf of all of the teachers at Amara High School and all three of members, we would like to recognize Barbara Graham Adams and express our heartfelt appreciation for her dedication and service to the Fernridge School District. Several, several of our members, many who are here tonight, attend the monthly school board meetings, and her efforts to ensure that the district is the best that it can be for students and staff, don't go unnoticed. Thank you, Barbara, for being a beacon of uh, reason and compassion, you are appreciated. And then I also just wanted to give a special shout out to Superintendent Carpenter, all of the district office staff, and especially Facilities Director Dan Fritzman and his staff for all of their efforts during this past week during the storm, um, and getting our schools ready for students and staff to return. We returned today, it was awesome, it was great to see students again. I know I say that on behalf of all teachers uh, at the high school. Um, and most of us probably aren't aware of everything that all of you did during last week to ensure that we could get back, but we just wanted to say that we recognize you and we appreciate your.
You're representing the middle school um, for Mr. Warren. We want to express our heartfelt appreciation for your dedication to improving the quality of education within the Fernridge School District. Your unwavering commitment to fostering an inclusive and supportive learning environment is not going to notice. Your presence at school events, sports activities, and recognition of students, scholars bolsters the educational landscape. We extend to you our deep gratitude for the tireless dedication you have shown while serving the school board and the community for the past six years. As Nelson Mandela once said, "Education is the most powerful weapon that you can use to change the world." Your countless hours of work attending meetings, reviewing policies, and making difficult decisions demonstrate your immense passion for creating the educational opportunities for the students in Fernridge School District.
Thank you.
What's good with options, and Lisa, this is for you, we made up due for on behalf of free. So on behalf of free, I want to say thanks again for your service to the Fernridge School District School Board. We have noted your dedication to attend meetings and your openness to receive input from stakeholders in the district. As well as your work to understand the complicated issues that arise. Thanks for the work that you're doing on behalf of staff, students, and the community. Sincerely, Fernridge Educations.
Thanks for all the duties. Uh, next up is our student representative to the school board, Gavin.
Um, so start off with the theaters, um, production is postponed and rescheduled for the twenty sixth, um, it's Friday at six thirty. It's also the senior night, so the senior day will be mentioned at the end of the production. Saturday the twenty seventh at one PM is the other production that we'll be doing. Um, and doors open about thirty minutes beforehand, so come out and see those. Leadership has just announced that they'll be postponing the winter formal dance. Um, we don't have a, they don't have a date yet, but they'll announce that at some point probably in February, we'll have that date. And then the Amara High School student body would like to be, give a big thank you to the district administration staff for all their work they've done the last week, you know, keeping community members and family update and all the information that we have. Also, a big thank you to the facility and maintenance staff, all the work they did, making sure we can get back to school and everything's up and going. And then another big thank you to the scoreboard, of course, for all the tireless work they do and all the dedication they have for us, helping ensure education is well founded.
Thanks, Gavin. All right, Director Pedro Program.
Um, okay, I'm going to keep it pretty short and sweet, I have a couple things I wanted to share. I should have gone first because everybody has such nice things to say about the board. Um, I, I would, what I, what I would share in my appreciation is that because I'm getting older and my family, time is such a valuable asset. And for you guys to give the time to your community is so appreciated, like, that's what I would, thank you. Um, as far as updates from me as a director, our early literacy success grant was um, submitted to ODE, that's what you guys approved last month. It's been accepted, but it hasn't been approved by. So I'll keep you guys posted on that, I'm still kind of just working on all the planning and assuming that it will, I did all the things correctly, so I'm, I'm kind of plowing ahead, like it's going to be approved. Um, science adoption, we're kind of still just working, looking at it. I'm hoping by March before spring break to hopefully have at least two options to kind of push out to the public, get um, get some samples in the boardroom, so anybody that wants to have a look at them can put out a slide deck that gets all the examples. Our integrated plan quarter two reports, we're supposed to be due at the end of January, but ODE has pushed them to the end of February. So our February um, school board meeting, I'll give you guys an update on some of that stuff. And then just some things that are upcoming, ongoing, we have the heart of the community event, last year was our first one, Amy Hands really helped tackle that. It was an amazing event, we had over twenty different community um, groups there, and it was just open to the public. We're going to do that again, February fifteenth, more to come there. Um, we have our elementary team going to an order and response intervention conference in February and another one in April. We have science folks going to workshops at Leni SD. We have folks going up to Salem for a health and sexuality webinar to kind of get an idea of what these new standards are going to look like. We have um, our equity team, the district planning, the K twelve equity PD, and then surprisingly, we, Billy Harrier and I are already starting summer program. We're not even halfway through the school year and we're starting. So here we go, that's all I got.
I can have something for that second item after your early business.
Science adoption, so this year's science adoption, K twelve. And we have team members from every building, administrators participate, I send updates, we need monthly at least. We have a team that's going to Leni SD to kind of do workshops and people are working very hard. Trying to narrow it down right now.
All right, thank you. Superintendent.
Uh, ditto the thank you, so first start off with just this past week, I definitely had a lot of folks out here. Um, I was here every day, along with tech folks, maintenance folks, and custodial staff. Um, administrators, Jennifer met, I met with the association multiple times to talk about issues. Uh, that allowed us to, all that time allowed us to A, communicate with folks, uh, hopefully fairly well last week. And allowed us to open this morning. Um, so I want to thank all those people uh, for the time they put in last week. Uh, ditto the school board appreciation, January's school board appreciation month, thank you to all the school board members. Thanks to Ms. Smith, who got all your names up on the reader boards, if you haven't had a chance, there's, I don't think it's selfie with your name. Um, school presentations, those start uh, next month, so uh, typically January would be the high school, next month is Wesleyan Tech. Uh, Wesleyan Tech kind of did their presentation in December, so high school will start next month, and then we'll go through um, the four schools. So you can expect in February, March, April, May, um, to hear from each school, and first one will be high school in February. Um. I know Ms. Vandecar is already sweating over that presentation.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, storm damage, we actually fared fairly well, but I wanted to give folks a quick update. Um, at the neat elementary, the only real issue we had is we have one classroom's HVAC unit not operating in full capacity. Um, and that's pretty much it there. At Amara Elementary, there was really no issues, we had one leak at the middle school in the classroom, we had thirteen science classroom. The leak wasn't necessarily from a hole in the roof, it was from ice buildup, water getting built up higher and higher, and then coming in events. Um, so it's not leaking now. Uh, the high school is where most of the issues occurred, that's where the power was out the longest. And we had one phase of our three-phase power out, and when that occurs, it causes some surges and damage and stuff. And so it sounds like that's what happened to a couple of our rooftop units. We had a light here all day today, uh, problem solving, we still have a couple of units that aren't up. Um, the, we monitored the freezers very closely, the walk-in outside freezer had to move some product, but I don't. So we didn't. We just lost some cut produce, um, and some minor, minor stuff, but yeah, not, not a big deal. Um, we had one leak in a classroom there, again, I think it was a similar type of leak to a middle school, uh, it's caused because of buildup. But it happened to be right above the uh, projector, so it dripped down on the projector. And then this morning, we arrived to, I turned on the water about six fifty at the district office, and we had no water. Um, that, the pump at the middle school was fried, um, so we'll be including that. Uh, I've started a claim with PACE, uh, we got a authorization certificate, claims open. Over the next few weeks, we'll be identifying all the costs, um, if the district has occurred in regards to materials, um, replacements, fixes. Um, once I get that, that will get submitted, but all in all, I think we fared relatively well. Any questions on any of this form and stuff?
Would those damn, are those images covered by insurance, or will they have to come out of the?
Insurance, we'll pay our deductible, so we kind of usually gauge, um, okay, is this close to our deductible, we're not going to pass it, this is going to definitely well over, so we're going to prepare the double. Uh, last item, instructional hours, we'll be talking about that here in a minute, I think on the, on the topic of the calendar comes up. Uh, today the state gave a fourteen-hour waiver, so to keep this as simple as possible, with what we propose on the calendar switch, making Friday a full school day, next Wednesday, which is normally a half day, make that the teacher work day. Combined with the cushion we had built in the schedule, combined with the fourteen hours, um, that the state uh, authorizes a waiver today in, in lieu of the statewide emergency, that all grades K twelve will be fine in regards to hours. Um, so there might be some tweaks second semester that the high school is going to discuss in the next week to see if they want to maybe add a minute to each period so that we can get a cushion of about ten hours between now and June, so if we have another snow day, we don't have to add a day. Uh, we'll see about that. Uh, keep in mind that, you know, another avenue for the board, or can always add a day. Um, at the end of the year, typically, there's discussions between myself and the, the associations about this switching a calendar day before the end of June. The other thing that would always be an option, although it's not what I prefer, is we can just mark non-compliant next year in the Division twenty-two instructional waiver category and say, uh, we fell under last year because of ice storm, whatever, and we'll be better next year. Um, so. I, I would also mention that um, K eight, excuse me, K five, we're not even close. We could miss another two weeks of school, we're way over time. Uh, middle school, even without the fourteen hours, we're good six, seven, and eight. Eighth graders are close, within a couple hours, because they get out a few days early before the end of the year. Uh, it's twelfth graders that are really, um, they're the first grade level that causes us to add time, uh, because they um, are out eight days before everybody else at the end of the school year, graduation comes there. Um, bottom line, we'll, with the approval of the calendar change tonight, and no more snow days, we're perfect on track. That's all I got.
Sorry, backtrack real quick, couple questions. Um, do we have an update on the water, the middle school media?
Yes, uh, I won't, I didn't want to post it until the morning because I'll be in early destined, but when I came over here, it was fixed. So we had the pump changed out, pulled out of the ground by ten, in town, got a new one back in the ground by two. Um, I kept all the porta potties there just in case something goes crazy overnight, but everything um, is uh, working. So the, about four o'clock when we first fired back up, and we're running the water, the water was not clear, but it's just because all of a sudden it got kicked up in the holding tanks, um, by the time I came over here, everything was clear, good to go. Going to confirm that, six thirty, seven in the morning, we'll do a post that all water is good, so.
My other question, do we, so you mentioned that K five is good and six eight is pretty good. Um, I had a couple parents reach out to me yesterday and today, and their main concern is Wednesday and the school day and the childcare issue. Because a lot of our families have missed a lot of work lately, and so then, then having to miss either another work day or figuring out where their kids are going to go Wednesday is, has been a really big issue to ten-plus parents that I talked to today. So is there a way that we could either make changes at the high school only on their schedule, or maybe just seniors only? Like, could we do a couple of Wednesday full days?
We need to move the end of the semester, so.
Which is a high school issue, right?
Which is high school issue, it needs to be aligned with everybody else through the buses. When we start doing something separate with one school, then it either, either A, doesn't work. When we start doing something separate with one school, then it either, either A doesn't work because of buses or B creates some inequity amongst the buildings. Um, so yeah, next Wednesday, again, if the calendar's approved, uh, right now what we've done is to give, extend typically Thursday would be the last day of first semester. Teachers needed more time to get through, uh, the material, give kids a chance to study. So finals have been moved to next Monday and Tuesday. And then made the workday on Wednesday. And so that plan was come up with, you know, meeting with both the association and myself as, as the best. Definitely not a perfect. Definitely not. I understand it, uh, um, you know, it's just changing a school day, but it's an unexpected one in the short term. So I understand it certainly does for some folks. Uh, one thing I would pass along to, well, I guess it would, yeah, what wouldn't, uh, affect it in this case. But if somebody, you know, will affect Friday, if people had already planned, uh, you know, I'll get word out to principals that, um, if certainly any absence on Friday because of something that was already planned, that would be an excuse to add into school day later. So they get approved tonight, that's all we'll do. Have school Friday, no school next Monday. If people had a better suggestion, I'm hoping to hear it. It's definitely complicated. When you start talking about all the other buildings and busing schedules.
Yeah, becomes a childcare issue. So I wish that, yeah, with childcare options, I know.
Any questions? All right, moving on to discussion items. Um, ten A is vote on the renewal of Wesleyan Charter School.
Excuse me. Yeah, but I just wanted to do the earlier that as far as they talked about, they talked about water. And as far as they're keeping for in the schools, there's space heaters that are available for the schools for any classroom that we set.
In regards to Wesleyan Charter School renewal, it'd take about thirty hours of work off of my plate. We hired Kristen Miles, she was able to do a much better job than I would have, um, and compiled this report for you to read. Um, from, as you can tell, you know, her summary report is that she recommends we renew on the charter. Um, and then the next step, we'll only back up. And so my recommendation would be to agree with that. Uh, that I would recommend that the board do continue, um, to renew their charter, make a motion to, uh, approve their charter, which then over the next few months, I get with Darcy, um, and we need to sit down and negotiate a new contract. Typically, they're five years. Um, besides the things that, uh, Kristen says in here, I would also add that, you know, one of my, uh, one of the primary reasons that I'm recommending that we continue with Wesleyan Charter is Ms. Stoller. As far as I'm concerned, done a great job. It was easy to communicate with. If there's a problem and I say fix this, which doesn't happen very often, she says fix. She doesn't call me ten times. She might have been called me ten times this year. We might not even talk. So, uh, she handles her business and I appreciate that. Um, so that's all I have to say. Just definitely recommend that we, uh, continue with that. I would entertain a motion to approve the renewal of Wesleyan Charter School.
I move that we approve the renewal.
All right, with the motion to second to, uh, renew Wesleyan Charter School and the discussion.
I just wanted to make a statement that, um, although I know that their graduation rates when combined with our, with the high school, you know, look terrible just because that's the kind of school that they are. But if it's, if they save even one student, I think that it's worthwhile. So that's why I move.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Are there none? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. All right, moving on to ten B, the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four calendar, which we've already talked about, uh, we do forward action for that. Yeah, so just to get a summarize, you know, the calendar change in the first semester will be Tuesday, the thirtieth. Wednesday, the thirty-first could be the work day. We'll have a full school day this Friday. That will gain us a couple of hours of instructional time. That combined with what the state's doing will be fine.
So quick question. I, oh, sorry, go ahead, Andrew. I, I just, I hadn't actually, um, realized that, um, the change was gonna impact so many parent, you know, young parents and young children because I don't have a young child at home anymore. Shouldn't impact me, but, um, but I also, I, I don't have any other ideas. Um, can we? Is there any? Is, are there any options?
Ms. Vandecar is raising her hand.
Didn't I have an idea?
Late night for Valentine's. So people can do holiday shopping with all the things. So hearing what you said, it makes sense because parents would have planned for Friday's day off, but not Wednesdays. So perhaps we could go back to leadership, go back to Marra Warren's leadership and ask, um, kids to volunteer for that Wednesday. And we've done it in the gym. Um, it might be better to do it at one of the elementary schools just because there's chairs that they fit in, but, um, uh, so maybe we could go back and have our kids who would have the day off help out with this issue. Because I can understand if you didn't know ahead of time, your daycare provider might not have room or whatever, whatever.
They may not have.
So, so we'd like to solve the problem with the making it. And, um, I think that leadership, um, they've done it once. They're planning to do it again. This would just be a, a different project.
Different one, yes.
My kids had so much fun, right Gavin? My kids had fun there.
Your kids did have fun, I heard. Um, it was very fun. The kids enjoyed the pizza. I can always ask.
But that'd be certainly something we can look into. Things come off the top of my head is, um, there's certainly some major injuries we can't accommodate. Uh, you know, super young kids, I'd want to run it by our insurance, a little bit different when it's a fundraiser for leadership in the evening than it is bringing our kids in. Take care of two-year-olds during the day. Uh, but all.
But would, wouldn't parents need to have already made arrangements for non-schooling children?
Under kindergarten, right. It'd be hard enough. They should already have the rest set up.
Yeah, what was the grade level for that night?
K fifth. We capped it at fifth. I can ask, but I won't know anything till tomorrow and we need port action tonight so we can move on to the semester.
So, um, yeah, we'll take it though. We wouldn't just leave it at the gap. They didn't. Well, I found both. So I know that it wasn't just. Um, so there's a lot of communication between teachers and kids that did not happen. And we just need to give them forty-eight hours to try to make it work so that they're in a place where they're passing and not.
There's still kids that will have to.
Yeah, they're gonna be.
Right.
Yeah, force is gonna go back. So, um, so I do know it's an inconvenience. I do think we should try to solve that. It is true that we have some, um, hurdles to jump over to try to make it happen. But, um, our leadership kids are amazing. It was their idea to do it the first time. That's why I threw it out there without asking Gavin, just put them on the spot. But, um, they are, it's a, it's a great, so, um, I think with, with a whole community effort at my work.
Thank you for the idea. Great idea, guys.
How many hours was this one day doing, um, the day night, the balance night?
I think it was four.
Four, four, it was four to eight.
Four to eight.
Four to eight hours?
No. Forty hours to eight.
Do that in my teaching. And I, um, make sure that hits the minute. Then. Um, so we should, let's see, get this figured out. I can put out the all call. We're gonna step up.
All right.
Well, that makes me feel a lot more comfortable.
We do need port action.
So I move to approve the changed calendar.
Sorry.
Well, if we approve the change, that would mean that they don't have support. We don't.
He's to be approved today.
Otherwise finals are Wednesday for our kids. I mean, they are so panicky today. I mean, I can't imagine giving finals realistically to my students.
I mean, can I spoke to was like.
Yeah, assuming you must live in it. There'll be some things to work out. Everything to work out is the after-school program doesn't run when there's no school. So people probably want to be touched then because they'll typically be here at six. So you'll have, you could have kids working from seven thirty to six. Maybe get with Danielle, but I can help from the next day. Yeah, the proposal is school is Friday, no school next Wednesday. Sounds like Director Gavin is gonna help me solve this problem. Take care next Wednesday. Read some coloring books.
Now, that's not, this, this coming.
No, no, next.
Okay.
Finals are next Monday, Tuesday. Do you have a motion? We have a motion in section. A motion to second, any discussion? Motion to second, any discussion?
Um, so I just want to make sure that what we're doing will be through school on, there was no school on Friday, but it's through school on Friday. And what we're going to do is the Wednesday, the thirty-first.
No school Wednesday.
No, no, there will be no school on Wednesday, but it sounds like we'll kind of step up and figure out how to, maybe parents who so it would be school on this Friday, on the thirty-first would be no school, but we're going to look into all sort of this.
All right, any other discussion? Are there none? All those approved, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Be opposed? Motion carries five to zero. All right, uh, there are no licensed employee, uh, employee resignations, new hires transferred to others. So we don't require any board action for that. So the non-licensed report is up on the board for information only. And then moving on to late items of voting comments.
So I actually, um, at a, at a meeting today at work, um, we were going over a modeling, uh, uh, thing, financial modeling and, um, the person that was presenting, uh, one of the things that would, that he was predicting was the number of weeks that our ending fund balance would cover if everything stopped, all money stopped coming in. And I, I know that this might be a lot of work put upon of. And I don't want to ask that she do a lot of work, but it made me curious what our ending fund balance.
Were around twelve weeks. I would venture to say we're within two weeks either way.
That's better than we, that I was seeing earlier.
We've got about a third around a thirty-three percent in fund balance. Meaning if we, our budget was a dollar, we got about a thirty-three cents savings. Wow, could be a little maybe fifteen.
A little less concerning. That's all.
All right. As far as upcoming events, February nineteenth of the school. And then I know they're making up the basketball games from last weekend for reverse seven. Besides that, I didn't have any opinions. Meeting adjourned.